Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the July meeting of the Lewisville Town Council. We're so glad you could be here with us tonight. Those of you in the audience who have joined us in person, those of you who are watching at home on TV 6, those of you who are watching our streaming video on LewisvilleNC.net, and those of you who I hope, if Mr. Moser gives me the thumbs up, will be watching and participating with us on Facebook. I don't have the thumbs up yet. I do have the... Wait one second. Okay. Well, it's coming, folks, so if you're waiting for it, it's coming. We'll start this evening's meeting with an invocation by our attorney, Beau Howe, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Jeff Singer. If you're able, please stand and join us.
God our Father, we are so thankful that you are the maker of the universe, and we thank you for entrusting this small, small part of the universe we call Lewisville to us. We give thanks for the citizens whom we serve. We give thanks for the staff who serves, and we thank you for the elected body whose wisdom and decision-making guides us. Be with us as we go through this meeting. Give us wisdom, give us courage to do the right things in all things that we do, and at the close of the meeting, take us all safely home. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll have our meeting with our customary roll call. Hi, I'm Councilman Jeff Singer. It's a pleasure to serve.
Good evening. I'm Ed Smith. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Sandra Mott.
I'm Mike Horn.
Robert Green.
Good evening. Marcy Galman.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
We also have with us this evening our town manager, Hank Perkins, our town attorney, Beau Howe. Beau, thank you for that invocation. Back on the technical controls this evening is Ryan Moser, and who looks like he's deeply absorbed in instructions on how to work this stuff. Well, good luck, Ryan. Our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker, and our town planner, Stacy Talbert. I don't see any other staff members here this evening. Councilmembers, we have one addition on our agenda, please, and this would be under 11, new business. This will be item F, and it's a resolution in opposition to the de-annexing legislation. You have a copy of that resolution at your place, and we can discuss it when we get to that meeting. Ms. Walker, have there been any other additions or changes?
That's the only one.
Very good. Councilmembers, if there are no additions or changes, we're going to entertain a motion to adopt.
So move.
Mr. Smith makes the motion. Mr. Singer makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That's unanimous. Mr. Manager, our consent agenda, please.
Okay. This evening's consent agenda consists of three items. The first is Resolution 2019051 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for May 2019, the approval of council briefing and action minutes from June 6, 2019, and finally, the approval of council meeting minutes from June 13, 2019.
Ladies and gentlemen, the consent agenda are items that ordinarily come before the council. There are minutes, there are financial reports, and rather than wade through them and look at them each individually at this meeting, we take them in a bunch for efficiency. Councilmembers have had these for well over a week to review them, and if we have any questions, generally, we ask those at our briefing meeting, which is the first Thursday of every month. Councilmember, if there are no changes for the consent agenda, we'll entertain a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Mott makes the motion. Ms. Galman makes the second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. It is always the pleasure of this council when we can recognize individuals in our community who make significant contributions, not only to the town itself, but particularly in the service of our residents. Chief Darren Needham, would you stand up for a second, maybe come on up here a little bit? I would just like to say a few words about you if I could. I'll try not to make your daughter blush too much. Chief, we are recognizing you tonight for your graduation from the National Fire Academy's Executive Officer Program. I know this is a big deal for you, and it's a big deal for our fire department. I see the president of the Association over there, and one of your board members also, so I know that they think it's a big deal. This program is administered by the Federal Emergency Management Agencies, U.S. Fire Administration, National Fire Academy. Did I get it on there in the right order? Okay, good. It provides senior fire officials with a broad perspective on the various facets of fire administration. This is our chief's most recent accomplishment for... Really, I think you started with the Lewisville Fire Department as a volunteer back in 1998, and then was a volunteer through 2008, but the interim there, you also joined the Winston-Salem Fire Department where you moved through the ranks as firefighter, fire engineer, fire captain, battalion chief, and that's all before coming to be our chief here in Lewisville. Chief, I'll say to you on behalf of the council, we are very proud of you, and we're proud of the integrity and the professionalism and the experience that you bring to our fire department. I know our citizens sleep well every night knowing that this is one of the best fire departments in the state, and you will be there to protect them. As they say, there are people who run away from fires, there are those who run toward them. So we're very proud to honor you this evening and recognize your accomplishment, and for the association, we're really lucky to have this guy. Thank you, Chief. If you want to say something?
I will say that Forsyth County as a whole has been really blessed with the fire service profession. Today, I think, number six or seven executive fire officers that Forsyth County has produced at home. There are another, I believe, six from Forsyth County that are currently involved in the program, and they'll be finished up here in the next year to two years at the most. To bring that total number to roughly 14, which is going to be just about 10 percent of the executive fire officer or executive fire officer of the state of North Carolina. Forsyth County is really blessed, and I'll say that I couldn't do it without those boards that I did at the fire station and at home. So I certainly appreciate everything they've done for me and everything that we're able to do.
President Lewis, you've never been a loss for words. Is there anything you'd like to say?
Just congratulations.
Congratulations. That's the shortest speech he has ever given. I give back. Chief, I think we also have two other noteworthy announcements. We want to recognize Nathan Turner. He has received a scholarship from the North Carolina State Fire Association. He is currently attending UNCC, working on his Bachelor's of Engineering Technology in Fire Safety. So that's another feather in our cap, as well as, I understand, you have some new boats.
We do. We actually took delivery yesterday of a used Swiftwater rescue boat, motor, some harnesses, some personal flotation devices, a cache of equipment. This is the first time that the state of North Carolina has been able to appropriate money to the recognized and type Swiftwater rescue teams, those teams that operate not only at home, but also deploying anywhere in the state when we're called into service. We're fortunate, about $25,000 worth of equipment that they've been able to provide out of those.
Thank you, Chief. Again, we're awfully proud to have you part of our community. Ladies and gentlemen, there will be four opportunities for you to speak to the council this evening. The first one coming up in a moment is our public forum, where you can address the council on any of the issues that you feel are important to you and that we should hear about. The second opportunity will be a public hearing on the rezoning at 7675 Yackenville Road. If you're here to speak on that, please hold your comments to that public hearing. The third opportunity will be an evidentiary hearing on the Avondale subdivision. That'll be the third opportunity to speak tonight, so if you are here to speak on that, please hold your comments until that public hearing. And then finally, at the end of the meeting, for those of you who are hardy enough and can stay up with us, there'll be another public forum at the very end of the meeting for you to share your thoughts with us. Is there anybody currently who would like to address, in general, the council on any subject other than the ones that I just mentioned? Anybody wish to address the council? Very good. Thank you. If you would like to leave written comments, there are forms in the back of the room that you can do so. Stacy, will you please brief us on our first public hearing?
Good evening, council. Tonight, the first public hearing that we have before us is a general use rezoning. The location is 7675 Yackenville Road. The pin number, just for the record, is 5877-50-6013. The property has a total acreage of 14.59 acres. The portion to be rezoned is 1.95 acres of that total acreage. The general use request tonight is... The portion is zoned RS40. That is a residential, single-family zoning district with a minimum lot size of 40,000 square feet. Two, YR, which is Yakon River Conservation District, with a minimum lot size of three acres. The planning board has heard this. They were briefed on it and then voted to recommend approval to the town council by unanimous vote on their May 8 meeting. You can advance. You can see before you on the map, the portion is hashed out in yellow. That is the portion to be rezoned. You can also see that the vast majority of the property is YR already, so this would be more in conformance with what is surrounding already to that area. So again, the request is for a general use rezoning. YR is the most restrictive zoning district that we have in the town of Lewisville. It allows the least amount of uses, and it is a low-density residential zoning district. The property is also located in Lewisville's rural overlay district that is intended to preserve the area along the Yakon River in a rural setting, a special character for those rural areas to remain low-density residential, and then also, it is consistent with our comprehensive plan. Oh, and that's it? Do you have any questions? I thought there was one more.
And the curtain went down.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Stacy. Councilmembers, anybody have any questions for Stacy before we open our public hearing? With not... Ladies and gentlemen, if you are here tonight to speak in either in support of or in opposition to this rezoning, in support of or in opposition to this rezoning, please come up, state your name, give us your address, and make your comments. Anyone here to speak about this rezoning? Please, come up, sir.
My name is Al Castillo-Hill, and I am the owner of 7675 Yackenville Road, and I just want to say thank you for considering this request, and we appreciate it very much. We are very excited to become a part of the Lewisville community, and very excited about the opportunity to take this property and hopefully beautify it and just add to the beauty of Lewisville, which my wife and I recognized a couple of years ago when we first started driving down Conrad Road. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Very good. Well, thank you. It's nice to meet a new resident.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in support of or in opposition to? Anyone at all? Very good. We'll close this public hearing. Councilmembers, your comments?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll say it.
Mr. Singer makes the motion. Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That is unanimous. Beau, you have the introduction for our evidentiary hearing, please.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, you have coming before you another quasi-judicial or evidentiary hearing this evening, and staff will make a presentation shortly. Keep in mind, as you have been previously advised, this is a quasi-judicial evidentiary hearing, which is required under our UDO and under state law. Let me ask the members of the council at this time, have any of you had any communications with other persons regarding the substance of this PRD special use permit application? This is for the Avondale subdivision. That will in any way affect your ability to hear the evidence and make unbiased findings of fact at the conclusion of the evidence? Have you had any such communications?
No.
Okay, very good. Let the record reflect that all council members are indicating they have not had any such communications. Please keep an open mind until all of the evidence from both sides is presented. To advise, again, the council, who has been through this process on several occasions, but to also let the public know about this, what is about to occur is an evidentiary hearing. It is not much different than what happens in a court of law, and evidence will be presented, witnesses will be sworn, and as a result, there will be four findings of fact that need to be dealt with. The first of these findings of fact is that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to the application and plan as submitted and approved. In that matter, the burden would be on any opponent to the development. That the use meets all required conditions and specifications. In that matter, on that finding, the burden is upon the applicant. That the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity, and on that finding, the burden is upon the opponent to the development. And that the location and character of the use, if developed according to the application and plan submitted and approved, will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located, and in general conformity with the Lewisville Comprehensive Plan, and on that finding, the burden is upon the applicant. Let me further advise the council that any motion to grant the special use permit will be deemed to include the above findings of fact as having been met. Any motion to deny the special use permit will require a specific finding as to which of the required findings was not met and for what reason. Be happy to answer any preliminary questions from the council before we continue.
Councilmembers? Very good. Thank you, Beau. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now open the evidentiary hearing on case L091 requesting a special use permit for the Avondale subdivision. Stacy, you'll please present us with the information as Beau swears you in.
I swear that any testimony you'll give in this cause will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so if you got it.
I do. I am Stacy Talbert, town planner for the town of Lewisville. Our second hearing tonight, council, is an evidentiary hearing for the Avondale subdivision located off of Shallowford Road. You can go ahead. Next one, Joyce. For the record, the pin numbers are 5885-58-6112 and 5885-57-7105. Tonight's request is for a special use permit for this Avondale subdivision as a planned residential development in the RS9 zoning district. The request came before us as 49 lots to be developed off of Shallowford Road. The subdivision is also proposing to connect to Shallowford Reserve by way of Woodside Forest Trail, as well as Woodview Ridge Trail in accordance with the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. The new streets are to become town streets. This proposal also falls under our Greenway and Pedestrian Connections Plan. What this requirement would add is sidewalk along Shallowford Road at the frontage of the property, and town staff is also of the opinion that the request does meet the general conformance of the town's comprehensive plan and the Forsyth County Legacy Plan for the area. Here before you on the map, you can see in yellow, that is the property to be subdivided if approved. And then the next one is the plan. It's, again, 49 lots. PRDs require some open space. It requires a 30-foot landscaped buffer around the perimeter of the property, sidewalks on one side of the roads per one... It's a ratio of one to one, one linear feet of sidewalk per one linear feet of centerline. This request does meet that, as well as the connectivity that's required by the UDO. It also meets that. At their May 8 meeting, the planning board heard this case. They performed a technical review for compliance and recommended unanimously for approval to the town council in those seven findings of fact for the planning board. I won't necessarily read those. And the next one, along with those seven findings, the planning board recommended to include my staff's conditions. Those conditions would be that all comments from the Technical Review Committee be remedied, include and show on plan the sidewalk along the property frontage of Shallowford Road. Again, that's the connection from our Greenway and Pedestrians Plan. Include and show on the plan the sidewalk along Woodside Forest Trail. Staff also recommended the following items that needed to be updated or added to the site plan. There was a general note on the site plan that needed to be removed. The mail kiosk needs to be added. That is a recommendation and requirement from the USPS, and then also negative access easement along Shallowford Road so that no extra driveway cuts are placed along Shallowford Road. And then lastly, the elected body, if you shall issue a special use permit, as Beau indicated, those are the four findings that must be found, and I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Councilmembers, any questions for Stacy before we move on?
I do have one. Stacy, at Shallowford Road, I know that real... Excuse me, in that vicinity, there's already some three-lane for the Shallowford Reserve. Is this... Want to continue three-laning the road any, or is that already incorporated?
I do believe... Let's see. Yeah, the three lanes would be extended to provide a left turn lane. I think that is what NC DOT will require. That requirement will come from NC DOT.
All right. I didn't know if they already went down that far or not. I just couldn't quite visualize it.
I don't think that they do. I think they do for Shallowford Reserve. I think they would be extended to allow a left turn into this property as well.
And I notice on the map, there is a property in between this proposed property and Shallowford Reserve. Could I make a safe assumption that the additional three-laning would, you know, make it contiguous?
I would think so.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that would be a safe assumption for NC DOT to require that.
All right. Thank you.
Stacy, the sidewalks we're requiring along Shallowford Road, they don't connect with anything?
They do not. It's just in hopes that if future development happens along Shallowford, that it would connect along the way. Shallowford Road is one of those roads in that plan, the Greenway and Pedestrian Plans that recommends sidewalks in the future, so any development that occurs, we ask that they go ahead and put that sidewalk there to be connected as development happens in the future.
Because we're thinking that particular roadway through there is one of the projects that we're asking for funding for.
Yes.
For sidewalks in the future, so maybe we can save a little money and have a little bit of that done for us, strengthen our case, right, Hank? Very good. Do any of the proponents this evening have any questions for Stacy about her presentation? Any of the proponents have any questions for our town planner? Do any of the opponents have any questions for our planner? Yes, sir. Please come up and be sworn... Beau, do we swear in the questioners at this point?
I have a question.
Okay.
Just make sure that it's only a question and not a comment at this time. You'll have an opportunity to have a comment at later.
Okay. Bill Benbow, 341 Shallowford Reserve Road, Lewisville, North Carolina, and obviously live in Shallowford Reserve. I'm also head of the...
No questions only at this time.
Okay, all right. My question would be regarding the buffer zone. We have, of course, our own buffer area. Then, is the understanding that there's a 60-foot buffer zone beyond ours to that development?
What's required around the perimeter on their property is 30 foot, so the 30 foot would be in addition to whatever you already have on the Shallowford Reserve side.
Okay, because for one presentation, we were indicating it was 60 feet. Okay.
30 is all that's required.
Okay. The second, I guess, is a question regarding the connectivity on the road there. Is it possible to make that, or stipulate in some form, that that is not used as a construction entrance?
Yes, yes. That can be.
Okay, that's our concern from a safety standpoint, just that simple.
Yeah, we can talk to NC DOT about that, about their... Because they would have to get a construction driveway permit as well off of Shallowford from NC DOT.
Right.
That'd be the only entrance that they use for construction traffic.
Would be off Shallowford.
Correct.
That would be fine. That's all we request.
And if they don't, let me know.
I'll let you know. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Benbow. Are there any other individuals who are opponents of this project who have questions for our planner? Very good. We'll now hear a presentation... Thank you, Stacy. We'll now hear a presentation from the proponents. Please come forward, be sworn in.
I swear any testimony you'll give in this case will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so if you got it.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Greg Garrett. I work for Sugarett Homes. Our address is 221 Jonestown Road, Winston-Salem, 27104. Pleased to be before you again tonight. We have another project that we're very excited about here in Lewisville. It is the 18 and 1/2 acres on Shallowford Road. It's a property that we've been talking to the property owners for many, many years, and have finally got to a place where it looks like they're ready to sell their property, and we are very much interested in developing the property. We think we have a really good plan before you tonight. It's a plan that's been looked at by a lot of folks. We started with the planning staff, with our plan, got a lot of feedback from them. TRC also had a neighborhood meeting with the neighbors. Of course, it was there that I learned that a lot of people are a little concerned about the connectivity that's already going into the property. There are currently two stub streets that go into this 18 and 1/2 acres, and so, you know, based on what the ordinance requires us, we were tying into both of those. I think it's just a couple merits of the site plan that's before you tonight. First of all, the density is 2.65 houses per acre, which is significantly below what is currently allowed in the RS9 zoning district. RS9 allows over four units an acre, so we're at 2.65. Another merit is one-third, and I'll repeat that, one-third of the property is going to be common area, and so we think that's a significant merit of this site plan, and the PRD has allowed us to do that, quite frankly. That's a very good tool that you have there in your ordinance. The plan for the property is, you know, 49 single-family homes, and we've, you know, we've been around for a long time. We talked to a lot of realtors. We look at all kinds of information provided about demographics and what buyers are looking for. And of course, you've got this, you know, aging population of the baby boomers wanting to really kind of downsize or right-size, I've heard it referred to, and so our product is going to be geared towards those who are wanting to downsize. So they're going to be patio homes. The yard maintenance is going to be performed by the homeowner association. Most of the homes will be one level, probably have some that'll be one and a half stories, but it's a product that's specifically geared to those that are ready to downsize and/or right-size their home after their kids have moved out. So it looks like at this point, we're going to be in the upper 200s price-point-wise starting off. Would not be surprised to see it go over 300 based on the demand that we're hearing about, and as many of you know, we do a lot of customization to our homes. We have base home plans, but then the home buyers can come into our design gallery and pick out all kinds of customizations to their homes, so minimum, you know, upper 200s as far as price points. And, you know, I'll just point out, you know, the fact that we are in compliance with the Comprehensive Plan of Lewisville as well as legacy. You know, staff has given their recommendation of the project, as well as your planning board, which was unanimous, and I would just ask that you would give a favorable vote for the project tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody here in opposition that has a question for Mr. Garrett? Anybody here in opposition that has any questions for Mr. Garrett? Okay. Councilmembers, any questions for Mr. Garrett? I have one quick question. We talked... We talked about the density. Translate those into housing numbers for me. I think you said 2.5 is what you're asking in the PRD, but it currently under RS9 is four per acre. What is that? Just give me the numbers. My math is sometimes too good.
Right, I couldn't remember exactly. I may need help from Stacy. But if it's just four units an acre, but I think the actual conversion rate is a little higher than four. But if it was four, it'd be 74 units that you could put on the property. And we're talking about 49. But I think it's a little higher than four units an acre allowed in the RS9. Do you have that, Stacy?
An RS9 district, 18 acres.
It's 18 and 1/2, too.
It's 784,000 some odd square feet.
Yeah.
Divided by 9,000 per lot would be about 87 homes that it would allow by right as it stands right now.
Current zoning.
Current zoning, mm-hmm.
Council members, any other questions for Mr. Garrett?
So it sounds like you're going to have the patio-type homes. What would you assume demographic-wise as far as like, I guess, population age-wise? I know it's not going to be retirement community, of course, but are you looking to have different ages, so families with kids? Of course, those looking to right-size.
Yeah, so to be clear, it's not going to be an age-restricted community.
Okay.
But our, the plans have been designed for folks who their kids have moved out of the home, and they're now ready to get out of their large home that they raised their family in and get into a smaller home that's got all bells and whistles, one-level living, and the key is that Homeowner Association doing the yard maintenance so that they can go visit grandchildren that may be in other places in the country and not have to worry about their yard.
So the entire community will be homeowners?
Yeah.
They will keep up the entire?
Yeah. So there could be a few folks that come in there and have families, but like I said, the product that we are offering, we're going to be offering in this neighborhood is specifically geared to empty nesters, retirees, whatever you want to call them. We're just not putting a restriction to the neighborhood that says you have to be 55 and older. But I would say that demographic group, the lion's share of the buyers in there are going to be in that 55 and up.
I've got a question, please. You know, a lot of folks would like to have privacy fences more for their backyard. And would that be something that like the Homeowners Association would standardize, or will they be left up to the individual property owners to come in sort of haphazardly, putting up whatever may be? Since you're planning this community, I just thought I might ask that question.
Right. Unfortunately, that decision hasn't been made yet, but we have done it both ways. And I know exactly what you're speaking about. And it's nice to have that uniformity. We've done it more on the townhomes, the single-family.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Garrett? Thank you, Mr. Garrett. I believe we now would like to hear from the opposition. And let's see, I am guessing we have three people signed up. I don't know if you have one individual that you have designated to make your statement. Is there one individual that you've designated to make your statement? Okay, well, very good. Then I guess, Mr. Bimbo, you've signed up. Do you want to come up again? And you're good, okay? Shannon Revis, you've signed up to speak. Please come up.
If you solemnly swear any testimony or give in this matter, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say what you've got.
I do. My name is Shannon Reviss. I live at 1260 Forest Wood Drive. Last month was 20 years that I've lived in our neighborhood. When we bought our home, we were attracted to Lewisville because of the small-town feel that it has. We were attracted to our neighborhood because it is a strong sense of community just like Lewisville. It was as a single, at the time, a single street. Now there are three streets and a dead ends. I'm not here to oppose the neighborhood itself. I'm here to oppose the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail. Our neighborhood is full of younger families, lots of young children. We do not have sidewalks. We do not have curb and gutter. Our streets are narrow. There are no speed bumps. Or, as I said, sidewalks for pedestrians, up forces all of us and our children to take our walks in this already narrow street. Our kids ride our bikes there. I think we can all agree that kids need to get out of the house and off the screens these days. And going outside in our neighborhood has been a safe place for my children to be able to walk to their friends' houses in the back of the neighborhood at the end of Woodview Ridge Trail and not worry about traffic coming through. I am very concerned that this road connection would allow our neighborhood to become a cut-through for the people that live in the Sequoia neighborhood, which is a very large community. I'm very concerned with the new community center going into Jack Warren Park, which is just at the end of our neighborhood, that this will provide a cut-through for people to get from Shaliford Road to Lewisville Clemens Road to the community center, skirt around traffic during the town events at the town square, and make our streets, which already have an issue with people not obeying stop signs or speed limits, will make it worse, endangering the lives of the residents, especially the lives of our children. So I beg you to not allow the connection to Woodview Ridge Road because of the situation in our neighborhood, because it would be dangerous for the children, families, and for your town. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garrett, do you have any questions for Ms. Revis? Very good. Council members, do you have any questions for Ms. Revis? No, very good. Thank you very much. Grace Warnock?
I live at 1255 Forest Wood Drive. I came here last year after the death of my husband, living for 19 years in Florida in one of these communities that we were speaking of. I chose to live in Forest Wood because it's multi-generational. I'm very thrilled, at my age, and I'm very old, to have little children living next door, teenagers across the street, to see people walking and riding. And it is a thrill to not be in a group of people that's all the same age. It's just wonderful. I like to walk for my health, and I try and walk at least a mile or two a day. And that's one of the reasons why I live in Forest Wood. I am very much against the Woodview Ridge Trail connector because of what Shannon has already beautifully explained. And I feel like it's not a good idea to have people coming through when we do have a narrow street without sidewalks. I just feel like it would be a great mistake. I know that for a fact, at the very end of Woodview Ridge Trail are about 12 children, including one little deaf girl who's very young. And I just think it's a great mistake for that to go through. I'm not against the subdivision. I think it's great. But I do strongly object to the Woodview Ridge Trail connector. Thank you.
Mr. Garrett, do you have any questions for Ms. Warnock? No, very good. Thank you, Ms. Warnock. Joe Sorica. Sorica, thank you.
I have trouble moving my stuff.
You've been saying it a lot longer than I have. You feel okay then?
If you solemnly swear any testimony or give in this matter, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say what you've got.
I do. Joe Sorica, 920 Woodview Ridge Trail, Lewisville. We are one of the two properties adjacent to the development. My concern and the concerns of the residents of Woodview Ridge Trail are for the safety of the children and the parents if the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail is made as proposed in the current site plan. I'm asking you to consider approving the development plan without the Woodview Ridge Trail connection because of the following facts. Number one, as proposed, the connectivity index for the Avondale development is two. If the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail is eliminated, the connectivity index is 1.5. Forsyth County Winston-Salem's requirement is 1.2 or greater. So it will be met. The Sugard Construction Company's site plan will still be viable with the elimination of the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail. They will just have to, they will just and will adjust the site plan layout and go on with the construction. Number three, the current state fire requirement for new developments is to have at least two access roads. And this will be met with Avondale connecting to Shaliford Road and to the Shaliford Reserve development. If you approve the development with the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail, it'll create a very real safety problem. The people leaving Avondale in their cars will abruptly transition from a neighborhood with no pedestrian traffic on the street, no children playing games on the street, bicycles and pedestrians using sidewalks, to a narrower road surface with no sidewalks, filled with our children and grandchildren drawing with chalk on the road, riding their bikes and skateboards down and out of blind driveways onto the road, residents walking dogs in the street because that's the only thing that's there and that they've been doing. In the first eight houses on Woodview Ridge Trail from the transition line out, there are 22 children under the age of 12, including one hearing impaired child who is my grandchild. And they are playing on the street. So I'm asking that in your consideration of approval for the Avondale development, that you eliminate the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail because, number one, it's not required by the developer; number two, it is not necessary to meet the current state fire requirements; and number three, it is not necessary to conform to the current connectivity index numbers. Thank you very much, and I hope that we have your consideration and favor in this matter.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, do you have any questions for Mr. Sorica? Okay. Council members, any questions for Mr. Sorica? I do, excuse my ignorance on this, but can you explain to me what the connectivity index is and means?
It, I would have to defer to Mr. Garrett. The connectivity index, from what I understand, and from the little I was able to understand about the Lewisville Legacy Plans and the ordinances, it has to do with number of houses, I think length of streets. There's a number of factors that go into the equation. And right now, with the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail and to Shaliford and to Shaliford Reserve, that number is two. And if you eliminate the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail, it comes down to 1.5, which, and I don't know, again, what goes into the equation or the factors for it, but the state requirement is 1.2. So whatever those factors are, it is still pretty good above that number if the connection isn't made.
Ms. Talbert, can you help us enlighten us at all on the connectivity index?
Make sure you don't have to push it.
By the way, that was a really good explanation for all the spot.
It is, yeah. He's on the money. But as far as in our major subdivision ordinance, we don't have any specifics about number of houses, length of street. It may be in the city-county planning for the city and Forsyth County in their ordinance. Lewisville doesn't have something specific for our town as far as the connectivity index. It just speaks to connectivity in the major subdivision chapter of our UDO.
Okay, thank you. It has more to do with the actual mechanical setup of the development rather than just a subjective, you know, let's put a street in type of thing.
I will Google it tonight, for sure.
At your leisure.
Very good. Council members, any more questions for Mr. Sorica? Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a final opportunity. If anybody has any comments that they wish to make, yes, sir, please come forward.
If you solemnly swear any testimony or give in this matter, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say what you've got.
I do. My name is Ed Thutt. I live at 1170 Norwood Lane. I believe I put in two forms that may be shuffled at the end.
Okay, great, great. But you'd like to speak now versus at the end?
I would like to speak now.
That's not a problem.
I could echo the comments of everyone else. I won't bore you with all of that echoing. I am a school teacher at Reagan High School, and I'm also an activity bus driver. Therefore, I know very well how wide our school buses are and how narrow our streets are in Forest Wood. I have a very difficult time imagining construction equipment and school buses and vehicular traffic on our roads at the same time. For that reason, I feel very strongly against this connectivity with the new neighborhood. I have no problem with the new neighborhood being built. I welcome them to Lewisville, but I do worry about the safety of my children in the street. I brought my children here today because I wanted to see, I wanted them to see this meeting. And I want you to know that there are children in our neighborhoods, and we are concerned about their safety, especially with our narrow streets. There are deaf children who live in our neighborhood, and I'm concerned about them as well. So again, I don't want to echo everything they've said, but I did want to speak to that issue.
Thank you. Mr. Garrett, do you have any questions for Mr. Thritt? Currently, since you're a school bus driver, do school buses currently serve that street?
Yes, sir, they do.
And so they get down to the cul-de-sac at the end and try to do their turnaround?
Currently, schools are making a, or buses are making a turnaround right in front of my house, which means they pull in front of my house, back down onto Woodview Ridge Trail, and then do a three-point turn out. However, that's only for summer school. During the regular school year, there are elementary, middle, and high school buses that all make that right turn onto Woodview Ridge Trail and go down into the dead-end areas.
Okay, thank you. Council members, any questions? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Amber, I believe you've also...
To the new development, nor can I imagine anyone living there coming straight out. The Avondale group isn't going to want to take a right turn and come into Shaliford Reserve. Wouldn't it be a lot easier just to keep going straight? So with that in mind, I'm using that simply as information that it looks to me personally that you do not need the connectivity into the neighborhood that they're concerned about tonight. And even though I think we all understand the idea of connecting neighborhoods, but when you've got the limited road space they're providing or telling you about, I would hope that you might consider just keeping the one connectivity that we have between the two developments. Thank you.
Very good. I'm going to kind of assume that was an opponent viewpoint. So is, Mr. Garrett, would you like to have any rebuttal on that?
No.
Okay, very good. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes, ma'am, please.
If you solemnly swear any testimony or give in this matter, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, say what you've got.
I do. My name is Amy McMurray, and I live at 921 Woodview Ridge. I'm right across the street from my dad, the one adjacent to this proposed plan. I wasn't going to speak, but I'm just the daughter of the deaf grandchild. So my kids have grown up in my house. They only know my house. They only know the blind driveways. The streets are their playgrounds because we don't have much yards or sidewalks or anything. So the safety is just one of my, is my main concern if my children, being right there at the threshold of this new transition. So the other thing I would like to bring before you is we have a neighbor. I'm not exactly sure of her address. She's on Norwood, this family, the Suttons, and they couldn't be here tonight because their son just got diagnosed with leukemia. But she wrote something to say, so I'm going to speak on behalf of her, if that's okay.
That's fine.
Her name is Ashley Sutton. Again, Norwood. I'm not sure her number. And this is what she wrote. She said, "To any and all involved in planning the possible connection from Forest Wood into the new neighborhood, as a relatively new resident, I would like to share with you a few reasons that we chose this neighborhood. Our six-year-old daughter, Josie, started kindergarten at Lewisville Elementary just last year. Every morning possible, we walk to our school as a family. Our now-three-year-old little boy has asked every day if he gets to stay at big school now. We have met and come to love our amazing neighbors, whose homes we walk to many times a week. We play outside. We visit in the front yards. We do everything we can to make sure that our children get the absolute most out of their childhood. And more than ever, a safe childhood is of the utmost importance to our family. While we do everything in our power to protect our... While we do everything in our power to protect our children, we have learned that protecting them from everything is not possible. Our young son was recently diagnosed with leukemia. We may not be able to stop cancer from disrupting his childhood, but we can absolutely voice the need to protect every carefree moment that he and every child in our neighborhood have in store. Allowing a connection from another very large neighborhood will make such an increase of traffic that playing outside will be seriously compromised and unsafe, let alone learning to ride a bike. Please help us protect our kids and their childhoods."
Very good, thank you. Mr. Garrett, do you have any rebuttal? Anyone else wish to speak? Anyone at all? With that, we'll close the evidentiary hearing. Council members, it's up to us now for our discussion and our consideration.
Got a question, and it won't mess up the streets, but the street that they're talking about, all these folks live on, is the adjoining street. Is that a town-maintained street?
Yes, I believe it is.
Because I know when that community was built in there, they were not town-maintained. There were some street problems that the homeowners were going to have to correct and all before the town would take them over. And I didn't recollect whether that had actually been accomplished or not, but Ms. Walters nodded her head that, okay.
The homeowners, the homeowners actually had to put in money in order to bring the streets up to standard. That standard was to make sure that they would not be compromised should large trucks or whatever come in. But they also had to put in drainage and all kinds of things because the original developer did not build to standard.
That's was my recollection, but it is town-maintained streets now.
Yes, it's been about six or eight years that we've taken over.
All right, so that leads me to my next question. If the North Carolina DOT can require a construction entrance off of Shallowford Road, can we as a town, with our town-maintained streets dictate as a condition that construction vehicles cannot enter this as this is being built out through this Woodview?
Yes, yes. They also would have to go through driveway permits for the town streets. That goes through George Hauser with our Public Works Department, but that could be a stipulation.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is during the construction phase, typically I know that when Sugar comes in to build a neighborhood, they typically come in and build the neighborhood and get out. So with that being in mind, even if this is cut through, maybe even that might be the last thing that's done streetwise is tie this connectivity in so that it ensures that construction vehicles can't come through this particular neighborhood to get to this development as it's being built and all. All traffic has to come in off of Shallowford Road directly. I'd like to see if some way that could be a condition if this is approved.
Chris, it is. I've already made a notation because someone mentioned it earlier.
Okay.
So I've already made a notation to update the ordinance.
I mean, as far as the connectivity, I think that for fire protection purposes, for law enforcement purposes, they serve a necessary evil, if you will, to allow emergency vehicles to gain access to our neighborhoods in emergency situations. There's always a downside to that. That was the whole reasoning, if you will, behind interconnected streets from neighborhoods and stub streets is neighborhoods are getting built out. That was, when this particular neighborhood was built, that's the reason they ended up with stub streets, with adjoining vacant land, is because at some point in time, those adjoining vacant lands would develop into neighborhoods and so forth. So I understand the need for the connectivity, but I, again, would like to see it minimized to just residents that commute through the areas if we can keep the construction traffic out while it's actually being built out and all.
Ms. Franklin, you want to make that a condition should we choose to approve?
If, I would like for it to be a condition, yes. However, how we need to go about doing that, that as it's being built, it is only access from Shallowford Road until built out. So both, if I'm stepping out of line, tell me.
No, sir, you're not stepping out of line at all. You know, not to try to foresee how the council might proceed, but if the council were to proceed to move to approve the special use permit for the PRD, any motion could include in it that condition that you've just mentioned.
Okay. Okay, all right, excuse me.
I know they've talked about the children that's there, the speeding that possibly could come about. Is there a chance of putting speed bumps in there? Would that make you feel more safer? I mean, what Councilman Franklin is saying, I mean, it's, that's why you got vacant lots. That's why you got a stub street. And those streets are up to par. They do meet town. You know, that's just a thought. Maybe a comfort.
You mean, you're suggesting inserting speed bumps in Forest Wood?
Yes.
Give it one more reason not to go through there.
How many houses on Forest Wood Ridge Drive? Do you guys have an approximate number? Yeah, I'm sorry, Woodview Ridge Trail, yes.
There's basically one way in. I would say 75.
75.
Yes. There's one way in. You come in on Forest Wood, you turn left, you turn right.
I'm just.
There's a cul-de-sac and stuff.
Okay, yeah. I live in a neighborhood that has one way in, one way out, too. It was built before, and for emergency reasons, I mean, God forbid, something happens. And I understand today's times have changed, and they do need emergency in and out and different connectivity. Joyce, for the sake of history, who was the builder that didn't build up to standard for the roads? Can you tell me?
I can only remember his last name, and that was White.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't, okay, okay. I just wanted to have reference on that.
Let us, if we have a specific question.
Follow-up from her about the assessment when we had to bring the roads up to par. And we do not have a home or associated, but our neighbors, or even the neighborhood want to keep it safe, want to make it. Our road running straight unless it's coming down, nothing was happening. So we voluntarily went to homes and asked for $750. And we brought in, I think, 50, 55,000 dollars, something around that to cover the cost.
Uh huh, okay.
Mr. Garrett, did you have a response you wanted to give to Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Certainly.
About this potential condition, I'm all for it. I would just need help to enforce it. So no problem whatsoever during the land development construction work, but once we have physically, you know, made the paving connection, then we would need the town's help in, you know, making sure that's not open for traffic. I mean, we'll do our best, we'll do our part as much as we can, but when you're building the houses, you've got a lot of subs in and out. And I think that the Shallowford Road is going to be the preferred access point. It's like a maze going through, you know, Sequoia. But if you would just consider that, if you're thinking about putting that condition on, I'll need help for and for.
If you guys would use that back end for construction, I'm sure for your subs and all that, that's what you would really want it for.
The Shallowford would be what we would use.
Right, but also this other connector here, that, the one that we're talking about.
I mean, it really doesn't matter to me. I mean, I'm totally fine not making the connection at all. What I'm trying to say is if we go ahead and make the connection and there's a condition that we not have construction activity through that connection, then we will need, you know, some barricade there, concrete barricade.
Then I say no connections needed probably at all, if that's what you're saying. Yeah. You just basically summed it up for me, so, yes.
Yeah, I think we've got, I think we're talking about maybe two different things. There's a connection to the Forest Wood neighborhood.
So what he's saying, he would put concrete barriers up during the construction phase, he would not need any, really the connection activity during that phase.
I think Mr. Bimbo was talking about the construction traffic coming through Shallowford Reserve, that connection there toward the front.
And what could happen is potentially someone could come down there, they'll see they can't make the connection and have to turn around and go back out. So there's really no way for me to physically stop people from at least trying to make that connection if, in fact, the pavements are tying together.
So I see this as a moot point. We don't need a connection there at all, basically, is what I'm seeing. Because you're wanting to use that connector actually for your construction activity. Yeah, yeah, and that's what the people are saying, too, Frank, and I mean Fred, that's exactly what's going on here. That's your thoroughfare to bring in the construction activity, basically, for the...
Shallowford Road is...
That's one of the ways, but also this other connectivity.
Will there be a construction entrance off Shallowford Road in addition to the main entrance to the neighborhood?
It'll just be the road that we construct off of Shallowford, yeah.
And you anticipate that that will be the primary entrance for construction vehicles during the period of time you're doing development?
Yes, because it's how you find the neighborhood. I mean, I would say that if they had their options, the subs, you know, I would say at least 80 to 85 percent are going to come in through Shallowford Road. I've driven it multiple times, and I can still get turned around there in Sequoia. So all I'm asking is if the connection is made and you don't want construction traffic using that connection, then let's put some concrete barricades there so that, so that I can comply with that, that condition.
What's your anticipated buildup for the neighborhood?
I believe that this neighborhood will be built out in two and a half to three years.
Council members, anything else? Anything additional?
I have a question. Stacy, I mean, is it an option? I mean, I don't think it is, is it not?
In our Unified Development Ordinance, in the major subdivision chapter, it does state that all subdivisions shall be designed to have interconnecting streets for a consistent development pattern. In cases where major streams or other physical barriers must be crossed to provide for interconnecting streets, exemptions for this ordinance shall be based on the length, cost, and construction difficulties of the connection streets and shall be decided by the elected body. Then it goes on to say, in another section in the major subdivision chapter, all subdivisions shall dedicate right-of-way and construct stub streets to any adjoining properties to facilitate traffic circulation within the context of the overall transportation network. The reason that stub streets are there is they're designed to be connected to in future development. It is a requirement of the ordinance, that is why it was required by staff to be put there.
That was my question, yeah.
Council members, any additional comments? Then we're at the point where we need to have a motion to approve or not approve. If the motion is to approve, it needs to be stated so. If the motion is to not approve, we need to state the condition by which we would not approve.
If there were to be a motion to not approve, you must include the finding of fact that has not been met.
Explain that again, both, please.
There are four findings of fact that must be found. If those four findings of fact have in fact been found, then you need to approve the special use permit because that's what the hearing is about. If one, if you wish to move to not approve the special use permit, then you must look to one of those four findings of fact and say that finding, whichever one it may be, has not been found, and why it is that you believe that that finding of fact has not
Will you restate what you just said again, Stacy?
The part of the ordinance?
Mm-hmm. Reread it, please.
It states, "All subdivisions shall be designed to have interconnecting streets for a consistent development pattern. In cases where major streams or other physical barriers must be crossed to provide for interconnecting streets, exemptions for this ordinance shall be based on the length, cost, and construction difficulties of connecting streets and shall be decided by the elected body."
But how many connecting streets?
It doesn't give a requirement. It just states that if there is a connection that needs, that is there to be made, then they make the, if the stub street is there to be connected to, then the ordinance requires that.
And that was the difference between the county and then what we in Louisville, the difference between the numbers, right?
Right. We don't have a connectivity index.
Index, right.
The one thing that we do require is that, well, we don't require, but the NC State Fire Code requires if you have 30 or more homes to be served, then you have to have two forms of ingress and egress into and out of the subdivision.
Just already met here on that.
Correct. But then our ordinance does go above that, that the street should be interconnected.
But the two already meet that, that is already on here, that they're interconnected? Would that be correct? The Shallowford Road and then, from what I understood earlier, that this, the Woodbridge, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, Woodview, that actually, it's not necessarily we have to have that connectivity.
Well, to meet the fire code, you don't.
Right.
To meet the Unified Development Ordinance for Louisville, it does require that that connection is made because that stub is already there for future development. If that stub had not been there, then you might could get around it, you know, or if there's a stream, if, you know, it states length, cost, construction difficulties, something like that, then that waiver can be made. I don't, I'm not sure if any of those apply to this situation. I know there's not a stream through there, but I'm not 100% sure on what the topography
I got a question for Stacy. Coming down Woodview Ridge Trail from the inception, how many stub streets are to the left toward the vacant property? Before we get to this point where this two, these two properties, I know that there's at least one or more stub streets that's already abutted to some vacant property that joins Shallowford Road.
Yeah.
And so if, my point here is that if this stub street connection is not tied in at this point in time, if that other vacant property that's between the houses that's on Woodview Trail Ridge and Shallowford Road's ever developed, then there's going to be a requirement for whoever develops that to tie into current stub streets that are off of Woodview Valley, or, excuse me, Woodview Ridge Road.
Correct.
Do you know how many of those there are at this point in time?
I do not know for sure.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing twos.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my point is that this street, by the fact that has been surrounded by vacant land for a number of years, when this vacant land develops, which this is the first piece, this neighborhood's going to be impacted because of the fact of regulations that was in place when it was built that required three stub street to vacant land. Is that correct? Okay. So we could be having conversations like this again in the future, maybe not to this level as an evidentiary hearing, depending upon whatever might transpire with this other vacant land between Shallowford Road and this neighborhood.
That would be correct.
Yeah.
Just to make sure I understand here, so the two streets that are actually for the UDO, we can consider Woodside and Shallowford Road. So going back to Woodview Ridge Road, that's our third street, the one that's in question here.
Right, the two streets meet the requirement for the fire code.
Right, and the UDO, right? And that should be the UDO.
UDO would require all of the stub streets that stub into this vacant property to be connected to. That's what the Unified Development.
It would require all three of them?
Well, the two coming in and then, and then the access to Shallowford Road is the access into, the main access into the subdivision. But since those two stub streets are currently stubbing into a vacant property, that is when the UDO requires those connections to be made.
Council members?
Sorry.
Yeah. The two challenge I have with this is that the roads in Forest Woods were constructed really early on in town development. They weren't held to any particular, I guess, if you were to build that subdivision today, you would have to have much wider streets, you'd have to have sidewalks, you'd have to have the kinds of things that we require. And I, and I, this'll sound kind of, kind of over the top, but I've been several times, I've driven from the end of the cul-de-sac out to 421 and from the entrance point at the, the Avondale Development out to 421, and oddly enough, it's exactly the same mileage. The point raised by the opposition this evening that, that kind of caught my ear is that this could in actuality become a cut-through for Jack Warren Park when we begin to open up the community center and have increased activity there. What challenges with this, council members, I think, is we're applying our connectivity standards for neighborhoods that are building roads to our current width standard with sidewalks, to a neighborhood that we didn't require them before.
Right.
So it creates a, it creates kind of this funneling effect of, you know, wider roads down to roads that, that weren't designed for it. I am a thousand percent supporter of the UDO, and I understand the reason we have connectivity, and I understand all of the important reasons why we require the stub street connections. But in this particular case, I think we probably, we probably create more of a nuisance by requiring that connection. So, Bodie, do you have some?
I, I did. There is a provision in our subdivision ordinance, we have referenced it occasionally, that says that the elected body does reserve the right to modify or extend these ordinances as may be deemed necessary to provide reasonable service to the public. So if you were inclined based upon, and I think that was something that was newly mentioned tonight, was the, the talking about the access to the community center. But in any event, you do have an out if you're so inclined based upon providing reasonable service to the public.
Well, the, I think about the connection from Oak Grove to Arbor Run. And Arbor Run was built first, and Oak Grove was, was connected to that, and we, there were stub streets and we required connections there. But you had two communities with wide roads and sidewalks and right-aways and medians that were connecting to another neighborhood with wide roads, sidewalks, medians, and, and similar types of roads. There's no question the people that lived along Ridge Crest today in Arbor Run are very angry that that stub street was required, but it didn't create, in my mind, the same kind of safety issue that potentially could be created in Forest Wood. So at this particular point, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we approve the PRD for Avondale, that we do not require the connection to Ridge...
Woodview Ridge Trail.
Woodview Ridge Trail, yeah.
All confusing.
And that the reason that I'm, I'm asking for the modification of that stub street is based upon my concern, hopefully our concern, for the safety of that neighborhood.
I second that.
Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, just a caution. You know, one of the things with planning is we have to think down the road. We have to live in front of everything. If we decide that roads that don't meet our current standard cannot be stubbed to new subdivisions, if that's going to be our, what we're going to do, probably in the neighborhood, I'm guessing, half the roads in our town now that have vacant land surrounding them cannot be stubbed to. Think about Shallowford Lakes, Willow Run, think about all, none of those roads, none of those roads meet our current standards because our standards, just like building code, changes constantly. So if we're going to say, "Well, they weren't built," you know, I don't know that their roads originally were not built to whatever standard there was at that time. It just wasn't our standard that we drafted. And so my caution would be, you know, when we, when we do something like this, what is the unintended consequences? And then does that automatically mean that those two other stub streets that Mr. Franklin brought up, they can't be connected to either then?
I, I guess a part that is in my mind at this point in time, if the folks tonight on Channel Six watching us that live in Robin Hood West with Conrad Farms going in beside of them and how, they were here just like these folks were.
Yes, they were.
When it came to stub streets coming through Robin Hood West to get to satisfy the requirements for Conrad Farms. So if we don't do anything else as a council, as a sitting council, we need to, we need to be consistent with what we're doing. All right?
And that was a hundred and ninety-five houses, not forty-nine.
So keep that in consideration, however you're thinking to vote and so forth. We, we need to provide consistency to our planning staff so that when our planning board reviews a proposed development, makes a recommendation, it meets, you know, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed, and it comes to us, and we're charged with finding four findings of fact, and if it meets those four findings of fact, we need to be careful in being consistent from one neighborhood to the other neighborhood.
Yeah, I completely agree with Mr. Franklin. I think the Robin Hood West and the Conrad Farms was somewhat substantially different situation. There were three stub street connections that were, were to attach from Robin Hood West to Conrad Farms. We did require one of them, and that was, that was to provide the second entrance into Conrad Farms. So I'm not sure I can, I can draw a comparison, or at least an adequate comparison between the two at this point. I respect your position.
I was, I was thinking two out of three got tied in over there.
Just, just one is required to Robin Hood West.
The one, the one father's back, right?
I think it's the one in the middle of the three.
Middle one, okay.
So, so again, back to my point, the property that borders this over there is, I think, forty-five acres. And so three times the size of the property that's being developed right now with two stubs going into it. And now those stubs are going to connect to these roads. So are we saying forty-five, you could put a hundred, it'd be a hundred, perfectly conceivable to be a hundred houses there, but we're not going to stub into them because the roads are different? You know, I'm just, you know what I mean? You know, because, because I'm telling you, if I'm those folks and that property sells next week and they come in here, they're going to be coming back and saying, "Hey, well, you, you said that our roads couldn't have a stub to it."
Well, if those roads are different, I hold the planning board responsible in zoning for letting those roads be approved. So we have to start somewhere.
I understand the roads already exist. The point was is that their roads, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor said that our new road standards, the standards that this one is going to be built to, is substantially more than the roads they're going to join to.
Correct.
Those roads, they have two more stubs in their neighborhood to vacant land besides this one. And that's the forty-five acres, that's the Dole property that sits right there. They got forty-five on one side of the road and fifteen on the other. And that will be developed at some point. It's got sewer access just like this one does, but you could put three times as many houses on there as you could on the one that we're doing tonight. And so are we going to say, "Well, no stub connections?" I mean, I, I just want to know because we're, you know, we're, I, I completely feel with what they're, I understand where they're coming from, but that's why that developer that built their neighborhood was required to put in stub streets. That's why, well, that's why they're not cul-de-sacs at the end of the road. And so at some point, you know, when their development came, they were told, "You need three stub streets out to vacant land because someday they're going to be connected." Well, here we are. And we're saying, "Well..." So I'm just, I'm just asking. We got to, as, as Mr. Franklin pointed out, we've got to have some level of consistency, and I don't want to box ourselves into a situation where now we got a ton of houses and we're not allowed to connect because we decided, "Well, for what reason?" So I just throw that out there.
Well, take it, Mr. Zinger.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since you've made a motion, I would like to, to point out one thing before a vote is taken, that the developer has proposed to carry the name Woodview Ridge Trail all the way to Shallowford Road. So be careful of the wording of your motion as far as the tie in because there is proposed connectivity of names even all the way out. So consider that before we, I'm not... Yeah, from what I'm looking at the plat here, it turns and goes out to Shallowford, and then coming in from Shallowford Reserve, it doesn't change name. It's like the developer didn't have to come up with any new names, is the way it looks to me.
That's correct. That goes to the map for site department, who is charged with doing the addressing and street naming for the entire county excluding Kernersville.
I guess my point is, is that we don't want to go up and set up a situation like we used to have with Lasley Road where we had to...
Right.
That it doesn't connect all the way through, is my point, Mike.
If the connection is not made, if that's the decision that's made tonight, then Sugar would go back before Matt Forsyth with a new proposed street name to be...
For a different name.
Right, to be proposed, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
To be approved by them.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
I just saw that.
Any additional discussion?
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
With your proposal, it is to not make that connection. And looking at the current site plan we have, if we don't make that connection, can we request a stub street within this neighborhood to go to that large tract of land that's next door for future connections?
The Dole property.
You can.
The Dole property. Just asking.
Well, no, that's a legitimate question to ask.
But, but looking at the map here, it appears that the current layout, I would assume that in essence, he's losing two lots if he don't build that road right down to where the proposed concrete barriers was. In other words, where it turns to, to go tie into the current Woodview Ridge there. I mean, so that would change the plat and everything else.
It would. That could be... Greg, would you want to maybe speak to that? I, I'm not sure what the topography is like, I'm not, as far as that area right there.
All right, let's see if we can come up with a solution here. So I'd like to draw your attention first to the detention pond that's at the southern part of the property. You know, this is a requirement of your stormwater ordinance, and it is tight to do that stormwater detention pond and still make the connection to Woodview Ridge Trail. If you look, each one of those lines along, once you leave the cul-de-sac and head towards Woodview Ridge Trail, each one of those lines represents two foot of elevation change. So I'm seeing twenty-five feet drop from Woodview Trail down to the detention pond. To me, that's a topographical issue. I, I'm willing to go back to the drawing board and see what we can do on a reconfiguration down there without the connection, if that's the council's desire. I'd just ask that I not have to go back through the process, if it'd be something staff could handle.
That would, that would be a staff-level modification, if, if that could be worked out.
Mr. Garrett, would you then, would you then, Ms. Mock raised the issue, would you then consider...
One more.
Having a stub street connection to vacant property to the west of you?
Yeah, I guess I misunderstood that part, yeah. Hadn't thought about that part, I was...
I mean, you basically lose a lot if you do it that way. You shift them all...
There is one later on Woodview Ridge Trail down there, I think. It's, it's not depicted on this site plan, but the manager showed one. There's, there are more, as I think Mr. Zinger made reference to them, but there are two other ones already in place, so I don't know that that would be required necessarily in order to get the connectivity that we're talking about.
If I may, what I think I heard you say was, "If we eliminate this one, can we also go ahead and address the other two that are coming off of Woodview Trail into the big tract of land?" And, and, and...
No.
I think what Mr...
What you're saying is, if we did a, if we did a connector, if you had a, you got one stub street going into the neighborhood this gentleman lives in, if you had another connector that went to that vague property and dumped there, in other words, maybe you shift the housing...
Creating a stub street.
You kill the road at the end and shift them down and put it through. I mean, I think that, you know, all that does is give us an opportunity for all of these people after they're built here to come and be upset about a connector, but...
Their road would be wider.
I'm very open to eliminate the connection to Woodview Trail Road, Woodview Ridge Trail. But to look at another stub, I'm, I'm not open to that.
You don't want to do that, okay.
Yeah. And, and just so you can hear my, just thinking out loud with everyone, it looks like potentially that Lot 25, if they could just have their driveway off of the dead-end road of Woodview Ridge Trail, that would help soften the, the change and potential loss of lots. In other words, that lot would stay there...
Yeah.
But it's just a driveway coming off of the dead-end road.
Mm-hmm.
So you're adding one, one house on that road versus forty-nine.
But that gets us back to the fact, we have two stub streets that are still in that neighborhood that opens up to the Dole property for future connectivity issues. So again, with what Mr. Zinger said, your motion puts that, those two in jeopardy.
In the future.
In the future.
Yeah. It does. I mean, I would potentially make the same argument to a petitioner in the development of the site plan that they do some consideration there because we're, but again, that's, that's just my point of view. And Jeff, I absolutely understand where you are on this. I mean, I understand the consistency Mr. Franklin is talking about as well.
But I think with modifications which are allowed, we can make that argument.
Mr. Garrett, if you would just put a little stub street there right across from your current stub street, that would solve all of those. We'd all be happy campers and we'd walk away singing kumbaya together.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the thing is, Mr. Mayor, with, is with all of these old neighborhoods, they've been this way for thirty, forty years. The only thing that's consistent is change, and the only thing that people don't like is change. And so there's a lot of vacant land, there's a lot of vacant land around a lot of old neighborhoods with a lot of dead-end stubs. And they were put there for a reason. And so, you know, we, we just need to be very, very, we need to be very, very thoughtful about what we're doing. We can do something great for tonight that's horrible for the future. And so, you know, at some point, you know, we got a, we got a small street here now. Wait until we've got, you know, three hundred homes that are going to be impacted, and then, you know what I mean? And so that's, I'm just saying that we've got to really think, be careful about what we do because we have so ma... It'd be one thing if we had a handful of these things and that was it, but we got a lot. We have an awful lot. So I just put that out there.
Thank you, Mrs. Zinger. Council members, we do have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to be clear about what the motion is, please.
The, the motion is to approve the PRD with removing the requirement to connect the stub street to the Forest Wood neighborhood.
So the motion is that it meets all four conditions, and then you want to place a condition to remove the stub street?
That would be correct, yes.
Is that correct? Is that...
That's how the motion is.
I want to make sure I understood the motion.
I, I'd like to just make a comment, council, that if, if that is the decision that's made tonight, that is, is it okay for once, you know, if, if it is approved without the connection, that it go back through at least planning staff to make sure it still meets all the requirements of the PRD and everything?
Certainly. Those, those, that can be done at the staff level, correct?
I believe so because we won't be reconfiguring any lots, other than, I think, possibly a driveway or something like that, but I think that's small enough, that'd be a staff level.
Okay.
One further question. Ms. Tolbert, I guess the motion also incorporates all the other conditions specified by the planning board except for the connection.
Correct.
Thank you. With that, I'll call the question. You know the motion, you have a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
That motion fails four to three. We entertain a substitute motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Actually, it fails three to four.
Three to four, yeah, thank you.
Because of the way it was stated.
You're right. Thank you, Ms. Parker.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
As well. Mr. Zinger makes the motion to approve.
I'll go.
He'll make the second. Any further discussion?
Are we, are we voting to approve this development?
Approve the development with the stub street connection.
And I would, I'll add that we will ask the town of Lewisville to put up... I'll add that we will ask the town of Lewisville to put up some of these fancy barricades that we have all over for the Fourth of July on those stub streets until construction's completed.
Any further discussion? With that, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye.
Aye.
Screen?
Aye, I've got to stay with what I had.
Okay, very good. That motion passes, four to three. Okay. Thank you very much, council, for the thoughtful discussion.
We're down to new business. Let me say to our viewers at home, it is, it's not uncommon for council members to have discussions like this, and also to disagree on what the final outcome of a vote may be, but please understand that we do that with the best intentions and our most sincere considerations for our residents and for our ordinances. So know that all council members were voting what they felt best tonight, and we made that vote. We now walk on to the next issue before us.
Next before council is consideration of Resolution 2019050, authorizing the contract with Sir Speedy for newsletter printing in an amount not to exceed $12,715.15.
Mr. Manager, this is six times a year?
I believe so.
Very good. That, entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Ms. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Now we need to award a contract. Mr. Manager?
Yes, the next is Resolution 2019052, authorizing the town manager to award a three-year contract to EcoLogic Environmental Landscapes LLC of Pofftown to provide maintenance of the perennial garden at Jack Warren Park for an amount not to exceed $15,505 for each year of the contract.
Any question for the managers? Entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Zinger makes the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is also unanimous. Hank?
The next two items are, they go together, they were discussed at last week's briefing. The first is consideration of Ordinance 2019035, amending budget ordinance 2019001 for repairs on Conrad Circle in an amount of $59,603.
Very good. Any questions for the manager?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll act.
Ms. Mock makes the motion, Mr. Franklin makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Accompanying this issue is consideration of Resolution 2019053, authorizing the manager to award the contract for repairs on Conrad Circle to Russell Construction Company at advance in an amount not to exceed $15,000, $59,603.
Any questions for the manager? Entertain a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Ms. Mock makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. Joyce?
Yes.
You have several things. Let's start with your exemption policy.
Okay, we had two, sorry. That's okay. We had two requests to be a part of Article 214 for the facility use exemption. And at the meeting, at the briefing, staff was instructed to go ahead and make that amendment to Chapter 16, so we will be adding two groups to that group. One is the homeschool group, and the other one is Teal Drops, and they are both nonprofit organizations.
Folks, so you know, this is a, this is in addition to our Parks and Recreation policy that allows certain nonprofit groups, if approved by the town, to use our facilities at no charge.
Correct.
Any questions for Joyce?
Motion to approve, Ordinance 2019037.
Mr. Zinger makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Hank, we're back over to you.
Okay, we have a couple of things to go with the same issue, Yards by Us. First is consideration of Ordinance 2019036, amending budget ordinance 2019001 in an amount of $2,740 to amend the contract with Yards by Us to mow the donated properties on Warren Park Drive and Lewisville-Viana Road.
Very good. Any questions for the manager?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Ms. Gollman makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous.
Going with this is consideration of Resolution 2019054, accepting change order number one with Yards by Us to include mowing for the donated properties on Warren Park Drive and Lewisville-Viana Road in an amount of $2,740 to bring the total of the contract to $40,170.
Any questions for the manager? Entertain a motion?
So move.
I'll act.
I think Mr. Franklin makes the motion, Mr. Smith makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, we moved through these pretty rapidly. It's not that we're not giving them due consideration. We were briefed on these at our meeting last Thursday, and council members have had an opportunity to read the resolutions and ask any questions of staff, and to prepare for a vote this evening. So we're not seeing them for the first time. We've read them before, we've thought about them, we just moved through them relatively quickly this evening. Council members, Item F is a resolution in opposition of deannexation legislation that's now being considered in the legislature. Before you, as a copy of that proposed resolution, we talked about this, oh, probably a month or six weeks ago. Our concern on this is, this particular deannexation would potentially establish a precedent for future requests for deannexations on virtually any municipality in the state, but certainly it would impact Lewisville because it could, it could open up precedent and certainly engage us in a number of legal considerations, should this legislation pass. We're not making a comment about the particular situation in Clemens. We're much more concerned about the precedent that it would set, that we may have to deal with in the future. Therefore, I'd like to ask you to review that resolution. Any questions you have, I'll be glad to answer it. If we approve it this evening, then we will forward it to our delegation, as well as the Forsyth County Commissioners. I understand that Kernersville is considering a similar resolution tonight. Now, we, we thought this item was dead because it did not clear committee. It stalled in the Finance Committee on a 12-12 vote. My understanding in conversations with members of the legislature is that its sponsor, primary sponsor, will be attempting to attach this to an appropriations bill or some other type of bill, not at all germane with the subject, but just to attach it and see if it could not pass in a vote with the other bill. So again, we're expressing our concern about the precedent this might set, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Do I need to recuse myself from this because of my ties to Clemens Council?
No, I don't think so, no.
Okay.
Thank you for asking that question.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve. I'll act.
Mr. Smith makes the motion, Mr. Green makes the second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's unanimous. It will be forwarded this evening. Administrative reports. Joyce, I think, Hank, you have town holidays first. By the way, congratulations to you and Ryan and David and the town staff for an absolutely fabulous Fourth of July celebration. As Mr. Zinger likes to say, they were bigger, higher, louder, faster, stronger.
Fantastic. And we still have a motion on the table for bigger and higher.
Anyway, yeah. A continuing motion by Mr. Zinger. But it was, it was a great job. Ryan, I don't know what we would do without you and David. You guys just really pulled it together. We had, we had 30 deputies and six supervisors who also did a terrific job. I mentioned it to Corporal Stringer this afternoon about what a, what a good job I thought they did moving traffic in and out. As far as I know, we had no major incidents. We had just a couple of minor concerns, but for 12,000 people sitting together all for about four hours to watch a fantastic fireworks show, I think we did a great job, and town staff, great job. I'm sorry, Mr. Manager, I didn't mean to interrupt.
That's okay, sir. For the remainder of July, we do not have anything that I'm going to announce for Shallowford Square, but I will make note that in August, towards the beginning of the month, it is worth noting that August 2nd, 3rd, and 4th, that's the Friday and Saturday and Sunday of that week, we will have performances of the play Bye Bye Birdie in Shallowford Square. And then the next week, on the 9th, the 10th, and the 11th, which are Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I believe the Sunday, the 11th, might be a makeup potential day, but in any case, that will be our second weekend showing of Bye Bye Birdie.
Very good. I do want to amend my accolades earlier for the Fourth of July and include Ms. Howard, who planned the entertainment and planned a number of the events and coordinated that as well, so please...
Absolutely.
Let the minutes and record reflect that she is included as a big part of the success of that. Ms. Walker, townwide survey update, please.
I think that was going to be left up to our manager tonight.
Okay.
We reviewed this from last, last week and talked about the survey, and I guess the PDF versions of the survey were sent out to council for their perusal. I think where we left it was to have any last thoughts with council, and then if so, we would distribute the full version to all the boards and committees and place it on the website.
Council members, any thoughts?
Let it ride.
Yeah, let it go, put it to sale. I did, I did take some time and read all of the 1,700 and some comments that we had.
Me too.
And I was pleased that there was only one that said, "Get rid of the mayor." So if I can bat that kind of percentage all the time, I'll feel pretty good about it.
What did you do to your wife?
That was Fanny.
Was that Fanny?
That was Fanny, my wife. Good as a mayor. You have the, the update on the DOT Great Wagon Road project.
Just a reminder that there is a public meeting on Thursday, July 25th. It's from 4:00 to 6:00, and the public is invited to hear and see more about the Great Wagon Road project.
There you go. Hank, Robin Hood Road, please.
School project.
Okay, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna let Ms. Tolbert talk about that one.
You play tennis?
Catcher, I'm a catcher. We did, at the briefing, have Colin Moore from the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System come and give us a quick update on the school system, where that stands. They had some, some things to work through, some design things that they had to work through, and I think now they are ready to hit the ground running. The Tomahawk Creek Sewer Extension is well underway, will be starting construction this month, if it hasn't quite started, broke ground already this week, but in, in order to, for the school to be built, that, that's kind of what they were waiting on as well, was, was the sewer. So both of those projects are getting underway, and we're happy that the schools picked back up, and it should be, they're in final design stages, and then that will be coming before our planning board in the coming months for planning board approval.
Opening August 21?
21, '22 school year, mm-hmm.
Very good. Fast project. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Green, we have a report from the Spedro Project Review. Would you like Ms. Walker to give the summary?
She can, she will.
Okay, we did have a request for a donation of $2,500 for the leadership Lewisville-Clemens organization. I'm going to defer at this point to town manager Perkins, because I believe he has all of the information on why it was not approved.
Okay, the group did meet, and that was chaired by Councilman Green, also attendance was Sandra Mock, and who was our...
Our...
And what we did was, we reviewed the request against the town's policy for donations to nonprofits. The group, if, and correct me if I'm wrong, recommended against the contribution because of a few facts. The group is not a 501(c)(3), and our policy clearly states that you must be a 501(c)(3) to receive funds. There were also four other conditions stated within the procedures, and the group was hard-pressed to find that the group in the request was fitting in any one of those four categories.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you for the work on the committee. Appreciate your due consideration. Ms. Mock, I think you conveyed that to the submitter.
At your request, I conveyed that to the submitter.
Very good, very good.
Yes, we are.
Hank, you want to go over our approvals at our briefing and action meeting last week, please?
Yes, I'll cover four items. The first is Ordinance 2019031, authorizing the Forsyth County Tax Collector to collect taxes for the town of Lewisville for 2019 tax year. That was approved. Also approved was Ordinance 2019032, authorizing the Forsyth County Tax Collector to collect taxes for years 2010 through 2018. Approved also was Ordinance 2019030 amended. This was approved due to a clerical error originally on the first ordinance to include a PIN number that was omitted from the last line of meets and bounds description. And then lastly, similarly, it was an amended ordinance, Ordinance 2019026. The amendment was to correct clerical error to include a PIN number that was omitted from the last line of the meets and bounds description.
Very good. Ladies and gentlemen, we're down to the final opportunity. If you have some thoughts you'd like to share with the council this evening, this is our last public forum of the evening. Would, please come forward, state your name, give us your address, share your comments. Those of you that are still awake.
Most people are.
If there are no comments, council members, back to you.
Just an observation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
We just passed this ordinance about the deannexation, and our reasoning was, we were concerned about the precedent that we set, and that's a valid, that's a very valid reason. But that's why being consistent in our planning and zoning is so crucial. It's about setting precedent. If our precedent becomes that we make a change all the time on the whim, then we have no code. And so Stacy is excellent, she's fantastic, our planning board is great, and we really need to lean on them, but every time, it needs to come down to compliance. And if we don't like what the compliance is, we need to go back to the planning board and say, "Look at changing this ordinance." Ordinance is law. And so I just put that out there because my greatest fear for Lewisville is, we've done a fabulous, fabulous job of planning in this town, and we are reaping the benefits from it. The PRD is working fantastic. I don't want to see us wreck it. Just hang on to the reins and let it rip. It'll be fine. But we need to lean on these people, and they, they looked at it, they did the work on it, and they said, "They did a great job." So anyway, I just say that it's kind of, because this, our whole concern with this for the annexation was precedent. So anyway, for what it's worth.
Thank you, Mr. Zinger, for the extended debate on the issue that we voted on earlier.
No problem, you know, if you want, we could go to midnight.
Yeah, we could, I'm sure we could. We've done that before. Council members, any other comments this evening?
I'd like to say something about the planning board. They do a great job. Does, does, is their forum open to the public?
Yeah.
For discussions?
Yes.
In a case like a planned residential development, they are charged with just technical review for compliance, and then the final decision is made through an evidentiary hearing with the elected body, which is you guys, the town council. They, they did allow the audience that came to voice their opinion and speak, but their vote was to still recommend approval because it, under their technical compliance, they felt that it did, it did meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Any additional comments, council members? With that, thank you, folks, for staying with us this evening.